Her music selection is typically.
Ms. Joyner, can you hear us or can you say something for us?
The chair is not bad, don't get me wrong, his music's not bad, but I mean. She like listens to like your suggestions and stuff. So she actually did a Disney mix for us one time.
Disney?
That was funny as a ticket. Oh my god, that was so funny.
Yeah, I would like that very much.
So what it was was she would play a Disney song and that's where you had to do like those wings or something like that. And everything after that was like straight, you're doing karaoke.
Where is that?
Well, I mean, I just.
It's on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday.
I go to Wednesday as a Saturday.
I need to do that.
I'm telling you, it's a lot of fun and you do it at your own pace.
Hold on, hold on. Hey, Ms. Joyner, Ms. Joyner, can you hear me or can anybody hear me?
You don't do the heavyweights or anything like that.
It's like CrossFit.
So by the time you get to the Disney song for this one, you were like, oh, thank you, thank you, Jesus for Disney. I never thought I'd be so happy to listen to the little baby.
Mr. Holloway, can you hear us?
And I've been singing along to that song.
See, that's what I was doing on. And everyone was like, oh my god, Johnny, like.
Mr. Holloway, can you hear us?
Broke up. And I was like, no, bro down.
Exactly.
Bro down.
You know the cute movie, the movie Ed Menzel?
I haven't seen that.
It's on, um, it's on Paramount Plus for free. It's a really cute movie and I watched it by myself, none of my kids wanted to watch it, they too grown. But I was in there all by myself laughing and giggling to the movie, all by myself. It's a really good movie.
You having troubles getting Rita on?
We can hear her, but her voice isn't coming through the system.
Hey, they can hear you through the system. But they're saying that it's not coming across very well, so I'm probably just gonna put you on speakerphone. Okay.
I didn't put nothing for anybody else, I just printed the, um.
Uh, well, right now it's just Jasmine. I mean, Michael told me he was coming.
He wants here.
Oh, we're back here, I'm sorry, take it back. We got three, we got three.
Do me a favor and take the.
I didn't even see what went back there, didn't even hear what went back there.
You said twenty each.
Oh, okay.
Like twenty packets, because I put a whole packet together of everything, everything.
Well, when you said it earlier, we could hear each other.
Because it's a pretty thick packet.
Okay, well, let me just go ahead and just put it in speaker. And then, um, because Beverly's holding a, um, a packet for me.
Hey, Donald, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
All right, we got it. He just came over the phone.
You're right, she already is. Thank you. Okay.
You do have a packet. Okay, go to your email and print thank God to the rego, pardon, across to the.
Yeah, I went by like a ball of bombs, stop that.
Oh, gotcha.
My box.
Um, Brenda said she was coming. I don't think Jasmine's not coming because of a death in the family. And, um, Rita had a mental issue, um, so she won't be here, she's calling him now, she's here on my phone.
Yeah.
How you doing? Is this some new right here?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the booth, the booth neck.
I love it. I love it. Oh, I forgot, I forgot.
The flat lights are prominent though.
I can breathe better. Yeah, without these things.
How do you turn them off?
I can see all the lights.
I can no longer hear.
What's the Holloway, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
I had the mics muted when I was calling Councilor.
I think it's this heat that's, uh.
It's a hit and miss every time.
Yeah, I mean, I think this heat is really doing, I mean, there's a lot of people that, that just, you know, under the weather, you know, aren't feeling good.
Is Ms. Joyner online?
She's on my phone.
Oh, she's.
Yeah, because she said she was coming across, but it was really fainted on her end.
You can tell her that she can join back in because Austin fixed it, because we can hear Councilor Holloway now, so she can join back in on Zoom if she wants.
Okay, well, we're just, let's just keep going. We're just keeping easy. I thought we just missed the whole city council. Well, I mean, Brenda's almost here. Yeah, they said, Brenda said she was at the back door, so I think she's just waiting on the elevator.
No, she don't just. It's like, oh, you're waiting there.
All right, Rita, we're gonna go ahead and get started.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this, uh, special city council meeting, finance committee meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Barton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Do you have to say anything, Johnny, about my participation?
Yeah, we're gonna do that right after the roll call.
Council Joyner? Council Harris?
Here.
Council Denton?
Here.
Council Pelham?
Here.
Council Holloway?
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, all right, at this time, is there a motion to allow Councilors Joyner and Holloway to participate remotely?
Sure move second.
Okay, motion's been made by Council Holloway and seconded by, uh, Councilor Pelham. Uh, Councilor Joyner, for the record, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and, uh, your reasoning to participate remotely?
Right, I'm conducting the meeting from Retreat Hospital in Richmond, and the reason is for medical reasons.
Okay, um, Council Holloway?
Uh, I'm on the highway and family reasons.
Okay.
And, and that motion, uh, Sir Mayor, was made by Councilor Harris and Holloway.
Okay, apologize, thank you. All right, uh, any discussion? Seeing the lights, roll call, please.
Council Joyner? Oh, I'm sorry, she, Council Harris?
Yeah.
Mayor Barton?
Yes.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Pelham?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, all right, we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Branson for R1. Okay.
Oh, good afternoon, I mean, good evening, uh, members of the city council. I'm really glad to, uh, to see you all in this particular setting, uh, because this is an opportunity for the council members to meet at the, uh, Finance Committee of the Hope. As opposed to having three members of the city council meet. And all members of the city council will receive all of the information with respect to the city's finances from its, uh, from its team, either Treasurer, Commissioner Revenue, and of course, the Director of Finance. And so this is an opportunity for the city council to, beyond the budget, to get firsthand information without it being interpreted by other members of the city council with regard to the finance committee. It's pretty unusual for cities that I've managed, normally most cities have at least three members or four, depending on the size of the council, less than a majority member of the city council serves at the finance committee. And so I think this is really a great step forward, uh, for the city of Hopewell going forward. As, uh, as you address and deal with the challenges of the city's overall finances and the reports that we will be providing, have provided, and will continue to provide. One of the other subtexts that I would, uh, add is that at some point, the city council at one of its finance committee meetings will also become, uh, should also become the audit committee, uh, of the city council. And I'm sure that the city manager, finance director, new finance director can provide the city council with GFOA's Audit Committee guidelines. And so I think this is, uh, yet a great first step, and then there's another step. As the city council should consider, uh, meeting as a, as a converting, going from the finance committee and then into an audit committee. Once it has all of the guidelines that can be provided by, by your staff. I want to give you just a quick update on where we are on the, uh, on the audit. Uh, we expect to have, at the next meeting of city council, our entire team will be here. And we want to provide you with a separate update almost from the alpha to the, to where we stand with regards to the audits for each year of the audits. Uh, one of the good news is that by, uh, June 30th, this summer, we will provide, by August 15th, we'll provide you with the, uh, audit ending June 30, 2020. Uh, that's work that we're doing with Robertson Cox, the outside auditors. And in the conversation with our team earlier today, we will be requesting a separate meeting with the city council beyond the meeting that we were gonna be having, with that scheduled of within the next few weeks, we're gonna have a special meeting just around the audits work that we've been doing. And we think that's gonna be not only helpful, but informative. So that, so that you'll know exactly where we are, all of the work that we've done, and where the future state lies. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob. All right. Good evening. Um, it's good to be here, uh, with you tonight, so we've been doing the finance committee for, um, a while now, I think since January or December. Um, so this is, in this transition, I'm gonna kind of walk through the meeting tonight as we've done with the finance committee, but the one of the first slides, first thing to talk about is how do we want this committee to operate? Um, but, so why don't we start there? Here's how we've generally operated the finance committee, I've seen other finance committees run. Um, it's that, one, you have a meeting, the meeting agenda is kind of set by and led by the finance director. The committee can ask for things to be put on, um, things of that nature, it's usually, it's the finance director is bringing information to the committee. Um, bringing issues that are coming up, whether, you know, related to the finances. Um, so it could be, you know, as the budget's coming up, it could be related to debt, it could be related to other things that are just happening um, during the year that, um, have an impact on the city's finances. That typically you talk through at the finance committee partly, so at least some subset here, the entire, um, the entire council's an opportunity to hear this information. Um, so there's both an education component to this, and here's what's going on, as, as well as a direction. Do we, is this something that needs to come before the council, right, or is this something we're just kind of, you know, hearing and take on? Now, obviously, this one is, uh, you may decide as a committee, and I, I'm not gonna get too deep into how you want to operate on this, but my assumption is that this will not be a meeting where you would take, where we're taking action. It's not a, it's not a formal council meeting, even though, you know, you formed as a council, but is that committee providing information? So I would then suggest that meeting decorum be held by the mayor. Which is people talking over each other, people yelling out from the crowd, whatever, you know, whatever those things are, we say, well, hold on, that's not how we run this meeting. That would not be the finance director's responsibility, but the mayor's responsibility, or whoever you choose as the committee. Meeting frequency, uh, there's two options here, you want to meet quarterly, um, with then monthly financial updates that would come from the city manager is one option. Um, and I don't think that's a, that's not a, that's not a bad option in terms of just, you know, all the meetings that you take. Minimize them a little, you get the information, but meet every quarter. Or option two, the old committee frequency was monthly, so we had, had been meeting monthly. Within, we had Councilmember Joyner and Councilmember Harris were the two councilmembers on that committee. The other thing that I suggest is public comments. Could come at the end, after we've been through the technical data of the committee. And instead of trying to get into a back and forth, because some of this data can be complicated and difficult to respond to quickly, that we, depending, probably depending on the frequency of the meetings, right, if it's, if you're meeting monthly, we'll answer these questions, we'll take the questions down, answer them next committee meeting. Or if it's quarterly, we answer them through the minutes or some other function like that. So questions that are asked do get addressed, we want to make sure, uh, that we do address the questions that come up. So those are, that's a suggested, you know, very broad meeting structure, um, there, so I don't know, I mean, the, the only thing I have in here, unless you agree with it all, is just meeting frequency, that I just wanted to confirm with what, um, is council's pleasure on that. And then, any other thing you want to talk about in relation, in relationship to, obviously, the, um, the structure of the comm, the committee meeting?
Okay.
Do we discuss that now?
Yeah, we can go ahead and discuss it.
I would suggest we meet monthly until, at least for a year, if everything's caught up and we feel at ease that we can then do a quarterly, but the initial year, I think we need to continue in the same vein.
Yeah, that was something similar I was gonna say, I was gonna say, at least for the remainder of this year, do monthly, and then starting in January, go to, uh, quarterly.
I would agree.
Make the assessment, and make the assessment in January.
Okay, is that good with you? Okay, uh, Council Holloway, is that all right with you?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll go monthly, and then we'll reevaluate, uh, in January.
And so I think what we decided, this will, this will be on the, um, third Tuesday, so after the first, between the first and second meetings of the month, will be the, uh, this committee meeting on Tuesday nights, not, not Thursday, Tuesdays. Okay, any other questions or comments on, is this the rest of the structure acceptable? I mean, obviously, you can change it, we'll see how it goes, and you can change it as you go through.
Same time, six thirty, special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we get into, um, let's talk through the agenda. We don't, I don't know if we've sent out the minutes to the meeting, if we didn't, we'll get, from last meeting, we'll, we'll get those out, I don't know if I've seen them. So we're gonna do, um, we have a few things on the agenda tonight, hopefully we'll, we'll, um, you know, bog down too much. The first is the monthly financials, and we've done, although it's not exactly in this order, but general fund, enterprise funds, schools, and citywide financials, looking at the revenues and expenses in these four kind of groupings of, um, of the city's departments. Um, so we're gonna go through those, and as we share those, I'll give some comments and provide some, um, and this is how I like, this is really helpful for, for me, and I'm assuming, Stacy Jordan's here tonight, um, to watch, I'm sure she'd run it the same way, similar way, anyway, is to, as we give this, as we're doing a presentation, please feel free to ask questions during that portion. For clarification, what you see, what questions you might have that, that comes up. Robert Bob's already in the, um, audit status. Then I want to get in, we, we provided, um, to the committee, I think it got provided to the entire council, the draft financial policies, we did send them out again. So what I want to do is just walk through each of the policies, and then there's very high level points, we're not asking for any, you know, any action tonight, but want to give you some context for as you read through these policies, there's a lot of, there's a lot there, I think it's eighteen pages or twenty pages on the basic policies, the financial policies. We've also added in, uh, draft, a draft policy for our purchase card. That, um, that was based on a model policy that Robert Bob's group had put together, and we've had, and have now modified it for our purposes. We'll then go on to, and this has been happening for the last two months, is the third month, reports from the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer. Uh, the Treasurer tonight's gonna talk about delinquencies and delinquency processing, uh, revenues. Then I'll just have a brief thing, talk about how was this, what would you like to see in the August, you know, what, what, what might we come back with um, in the August timeframe? And then one thing that, uh, I've always liked to do was, we've, we talk about things here, well, what's happened, right? We've talked about things we're gonna do, um, so the old business usually says, hey, we talked about this, here's the status. Um, so I try to kind of follow through, so every month, we're looking at, what did we do last month, what did we talk about, where is it now? So that's, that's the general structure of the agenda, um, that we've put together. Any questions on that? So that's what we're gonna go through tonight. Okay, so monthly financials. I show these in two ways, this is, uh, this is the chart way with some, you know, some, um, interesting facts on it, or some interesting, uh, things to think about. So, general fund net revenue so far in our financials, this is as of June 30th, um, is expected to be positive, meaning more revenue than expense. Now, the year's still not closed, we're still, we've gotten almost all of our revenue, but we still do have expenses coming in that get accrued back into the, the past fiscal year. So those all haven't been taken into account, but even with that, as, as those expenses come in, we expect to end the year positively, which is good news. You know, partly because we have some things that have come up, right, Winston Churchill, um, is probably gonna cost about, estimated, you know, somewhere around a million dollars. Well, we might have some money left over from '24 to pay for that project, um, so that's good news. Um, other things that might come up, we had five million dollars roughly of capital, um, that was not funded, right, because we didn't have the, couldn't see the money to fund that. So this might be an opportunity, once, once our books are closed, and once we have a better sense of what actually we're ending with, of being able to possibly an opportunity to fund more of those things. So those are the kinds of things that I think we'll see kind of following. So what you're, what you're seeing right now is kind of our current look at where things are, um, at the end of June. So because, this is a little bit, here we go, a little bit of a workaround after you, because PowerPoint doesn't allow you to do landscape and portrait slides together. So, this is a lot of numbers, so, but one of the things that we look at every month is the, the revenues, and this is, this is for the general fund. So these are all in, obviously, obviously, all in audited numbers. But we look at the, the primary revenue sources. We show for the past fiscal year, for fiscal year, um, '23, what, what was budgeted, what were our actuals? And at the end of the year, what was our percent received? And then we look at FY '24, um, what's budgeted, what are the actuals, um, what's the F, what's the percent received? And we're, we've added in a expected end of year, which has a little less relevance, little less relevance, um, at the end of the year, but has more relevance as you go through the year, we want to reflect, hey, things are going up, things are going down, here's what's happening, to give you a sense of, you know, on a little bit of a real time basis, here's what's going on with the financials. And then that should translate, if things are going up, and we're, as I say, on the expense side, that should translate into we gotta come back to you and ask for, right, some, uh, some higher appropriations. Um, so that's the kind of thing we'd wanna, what we want to look at and then be able to relate to you. So what we have here is, which is interesting, right, revenues have come in a little higher than expected, so, which is a positive thing. Expenses have come in a little lower, but actually expenses aren't, um, aren't expected to be. Again, we have more expenses coming in this year, or, you know, in for '24. Um, but we're not expected to be that far off of where we were in '20, what our budget was in '24. So that's the general fund, so overall, positive news as we're looking at it, we want to see what happens with the end of the year, as we close the year, want to see what happens with the, you know, all of the other audits as they start coming in. That will help us kind of target these as well, be informative for, um, our financials as well. But that's, that's the kind of the, the look we're giving in terms of, we, you know, we've gone to fairly, I mean, detail, you can get a lot more detail. These are rolled up, all, you know, rolled up categories, so it's, it's somewhat digestible versus the, if you, you know, when you've gotten the big books of line items, indigestible. Um, in this kind of meeting, but this is trying to give you a sense of, you know, what's going on, where are we, where have we been? Any questions on general fund?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, um. What was my thought? Are there's the, uh, the books that are not closed, is that centered around CSA and wastewater?
No, every, every, nothing is closed yet, so what happens, that the government, the, um, local governments and the city of Hopewell works on what's called a modified accrual basis, which means that, um, expenses that are incurred and, you know, we're expenses that are incurred in the last fiscal year, but then we get a bill for it.
Okay.
So we don't pay it till July, we say, ah, we get the money in July, that stays in July, but the expense actually gets accrued back, so it's just, it's the accounting piece of that. So we don't close it until we've gotten, we've paid all the bills. You know, there's some payroll that gets paid in July, but it's, you know, actually about half of it's for last fiscal year, half is for this fiscal year, so you have to split that out.
And what is miscellaneous revenue?
Um, miscellaneous revenue here is primarily, um, and this is, you know, we've talked about, I don't like miscellaneous revenue, this is.
I don't either.
But this is primarily, the big numbers here are what, what was termed, um, use of surplus. So, we're not using use of surplus in FY '25, which, which means, they just said, oh, we have money laying around, we're gonna use that.
How do you have money laying around?
Well, you know, we have reserve money, but we didn't know exactly how much we had, which is the problem of use of surplus, because we didn't have our audits. Um, and so, you, there may be a time you want to use reserves, and we need to say that this is a use of reserves. And it usually is tracked below the line of revenues and expenses, right, so it's very obvious. In the '23 and '24 budgets, um, when they were set, it was put into miscellaneous revenue, so it's not obvious. So that's what's reflected, what's reflected here is what we, the structure we have. We don't have any use of surplus in the FY '21, '25 budget, um, but if we did, or if we need to add that during the year, I'd want to show that actually as a below the line, um, revenue source, right? So, meaning that we're, after we kind of net out revenues minus expenses, we said, and we need this money, right, because, and that's what happens. Revenue minus expenses, you'll use reserves when your expenses are greater than your revenues. And it's a, it's a way, it's a clear way of tracking, how are we paying for our services? Is it all from current revenues, or is it a combination of current revenues and reserves? Right, and reserves might mean you're writing day fund, which, or it just could mean, um, you know, monies that are, you know, unassigned fund balance would be another way of saying that, right, so monies, they're just idle monies you have because we've, you know, used, we, we just had additional monies that we haven't assigned anywhere. So that'd be another type of reserve that you might use. So for example, if we end the fiscal year and, um, with an extra, with extra money, uh, we may say, we're gonna, we have now this million dollar repair for Winston Churchill. We don't have revenue identified for that, so we'll have to use reserves, and those reserves came from, you know, excess money in the last fiscal year. So we definitely want to, that should be something you're always seeing as we go through, it should be very clear when you use reserves, it should not be, and is not for '25, rolled up into miscellaneous revenues.
And, and I want to steal, what is use of money in property?
Uh, use of money in property would be, we, we have, we may have leases, we have interest earnings on our investments. Um, so it's a, yeah, it's a large category that's just things that we're, we're getting paid for, you know, either because we've invested or someone's paying us, that's the generally, what that's included in there. what that's included in there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Branson on this section?
Okay. Enterprise financials. I have rolled these all together, so when I talk about enterprise financials, it is a combination of regional water, right, because it's water renewal, I keep saying this incorrectly, it's water renewal, sewer, solid waste and stormwater. So those are separate enterprises. There's an argument to pull those apart, but I've rolled them up together for here. And what you see is that you have actually, expenses are greater than revenues in this category. That is a combination of a couple things. One, your regional, the water renewal budget, if you remember back into February, we came back and said, hey, we, we're six and a half million dollar over, but we expect to be six and a half million dollar over budget for the entire year. It's actually somewhere about five and a half million is the, kind of the current roughly number. And so what we didn't do was go back and increase the rates at that time. So we increased expenses, not the revenue. We will have true-ups for that, which will help, right? We true-up with the industries and the city, so it'll help make up for that. The other piece of that is we have lower sewer rates. We haven't raised sewer rates since 2017. We're in the process now of doing an RFP with, with Alan Harrison, who's your new water renewal general manager, he's in the process of getting an RFP together, and we'll be going out for an RFP to get water rates, or sewer rates, I'm sorry, that will come back this year. But our sewer revenue is a little under total expenses. And so that's also, so we, we do use, in that case, we'll probably have to use reserves. What we, here's what we did for our budget, so we need to, you know, match these up, so we cut back some of the needed costs, and so then we'll have to probably program those at mid-year, once we have got a clear path to how we can pay for those things. Well, that Alan will have to come back and say, okay, we need, whether it's from reserves or now we're going to increase our rates, we'll get the money from there, how to pay for that. So we have a few things going on, on the, on the utility side that we have to address. We know that, you know, the solid waste rates went up because with the new contract, so that's already, that's already happened, so, so that'll match, and we are planning on coming back, or I think, you know, that Mr. Campbell will come back with some, and he has something, I think, in the next meeting scheduled on, uh, yeah, either this meeting or August, maybe probably August, on the stormwater fees. So that's, the big picture is, and I'll give you the, more of the detailed budget here, is overall, enterprise fund on an unaudited, unaudited basis at this point are about six and a half million dollars, oh, under budget, I mean, over budget, that they have, you have more expenses than revenue. Most of that is in the, the regional water space, or the water renewal space. So again, that comes back through a combination of you've had accumulated revenues from what we've called miscellaneous revenues. We'll be, I'm, I'm going to leave my notes for Stacy to, one of the things we want to change is we have, we, we just got going too late when I got here to change them this year, we're going to change them, you know, recommending changing next year to just make those more descriptive revenue charges, but hauled waste revenues, leachate revenues, whatever you want to call them, those have been accumulated and have been used to, you know, to pay for that utility, but just looking at revenues in, expenses out this year, we're over budget. We are in the process of doing true-ups with the partners, and, and so that's something that we're, I, I think we talked about a little, we will talk about at the very end, but we're going to come back to you either next week, but I'm thinking probably more August, because we haven't seen the agreement yet, to talk, to kind of codify how we, how we're going to deal with true-ups. But part of those revenues that will come in will, will also help fund this, this net revenue. Any questions here? It's a lot.
How do you make up for six and a half million dollars?
Yeah, so it's a combination, there's, you know, part of it, there's, as we calculate it right now, like, there's, there is a partner owes nearly four million dollars in true-ups, they'd have to pay four million dollars if that's what it, you know, ends up all coming out to. So that's a big chunk of it. And the others, based on, again, based on agreement that I, that I don't have to show you, so I just have to tell you generally what we're thinking about it, is the use of accumulated leachate and hauled waste revenues that would fund the rest, right? So rather than writing a check to people, it's like, hey, if you're, if you're over, if you, we've given you more service than you've paid for, you need to pay for that. But if you're under, which meaning you've paid for more service than you received, we're going to save that money and give you credits for that, for capital or for cost overruns like this, right? So we'll, and we'll be, we'll formalize that, we'll track it a little better. And then here's the other thing I want to say, I think over time, that what the, and this is a nice thing, there, this is not a simple city, right? I mean, no city is, I don't think, I think very few cities are, but the city of Hopewell is not a simple city, it's complex. There's a lot of things going on here with all of your, all of your utilities, water renewals, like nothing I've ever seen or dealt with, so it's been fascinating. I mean, that's, it's a, it's a kind of a unusual animal, right, in terms of how it's structured and how money comes in, and that's not good or bad, it's just complex, right? So one of the things that, well, you'll learn over time, and why your questions are important, is it's just how the city works and how monies come in. And I, you know, as a finance person, I want to be as concise as possible, but man, it's hard to be really concise sometimes when you're having to talk about accounting and, you know, and the politics of some of this stuff, especially on, you know, water renewal, and, you know, how money comes in, and how we have to account for it, and all those kinds of things, right? That's the kind of, I think, education that you'll get in anybody who shows up or anybody who watches this, hopefully will also get, that'll both demystify, but also shine a spotlight on just the complexities of the city, the city you run here. And the enterprise funds tend to be very complex, and here's the other thing the enterprise funds do, is you have to, you know, you're, you're paying for stuff. So sewer rates, we come back with higher sewer rates, nobody's going to like that, right? And for good reason, nobody wants to pay higher rates, but we'll talk about, well, here's how we fund it, here's where we get the money, here's why we need the money. And so hopefully it'll help with some of those discussions, there'll still be hard discussions, but.
How much outstanding sewer waste do we still have out there? Outstanding sewer rates that people haven't paid?
Uh, yes. Yes, we do.
I know how much.
That's a, let's see, I do, I just, because I just didn't look at this today, for this year, just, just this, this year's bills, it's roughly three hundred and twenty thousand dollars are delinquent, but if you look back over the last, yeah, five, six, seven years, it's like one point six million dollars are delinquent. Now, some of that, you know, some of that is a combination of, did we bill people who left, right? We don't, you know, our customers, we get that information from American Water Company that gets then billed and collected by data integrators. That is definitely a contract we have to change, and I think we'll, we need to deal with that as part of the sewer rate study, because there'll be some cost to that, I think. I think part of it needs to come in-house, part of it will still get you a, a better contractor out there, but it's going to cost a little money to do that, because data integrators is not a reliable partner.
Right.
But you still have lots of, you know, reasons that people move, you know, this is an area with a lot of military, so they come in, they leave, you know, they maybe haven't paid their bill, and then we, you can't really track them down. So that kind of includes a lot of that outstanding debt, the one point six million is a lot of stuff over the years that I don't know if we'll ever really collect. This year it's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that is delinquent. You know, some of that is kind of, you know, some of it's delinquent, some of that, a little that's current, but you have these, you know, we have, we look at current, like within thirty days, thirty to sixty, sixty to ninety, over ninety. And there's a big, just a big amount over ninety. So that's something definitely we have to deal with, and that's some, that's another bit of the complexity I talked about, especially with sewer, because there hasn't really been the structure for anyone to really take care of that, right? It's unclear to me that anyone's ever had, even though, and you look back, and the same issues have persisted the whole time they've been here, and we've, and we still haven't dealt with it. And even, even in my tenure here, it gets, it gets lost in all the other things you have to do.
Yeah.
And that's, you know.
When you contract everything else, why we can't contract that, somebody collect that money?
But it, it needs to be, it does need to be addressed, and we're trying to set that up more for both on the rate side as well as with data integrators to hold them more accountable, if possible, for as long as you still have them.
Yeah. One other question, in expenditures, other personnel and their professional services, is all that contract people?
Other personnel is not, that would be just other personnel expenses. That would be, I think there's like, I don't know, I know there's phone stipends and there's probably workers' comp.
Bonuses.
And other personnel, so that's actually personnel costs.
We give bonuses?
No.
Okay. Stipends of what type, other than their salary?
Was that stipends? I'd like a cellphone stipend. So people use their own cellphone for work, they get eighteen bucks a month. I mean, those kind of small things, there's probably, and especially in utilities, there would be uniform allowance, things of that nature would be another personnel.
But professional services.
Professional services, yeah, that'd be a combination of consultants and engineer, I mean, which are engineers, and yeah, outside services that you provide, that are provided. And you'd have to look at, you know.
Seven million dollars or?
Eight million, yeah, it's, you know, these are, you look at services supplies, fifteen million dollars. There's a lot of, it takes a lot of money to run these things, especially you see it a lot on, there's a lot of capital infusion, and even though these are capital, but even the operating, just operating maintenance is very expensive on these systems, so you do see a lot of money there. And that's something we could break down more, I mean, this is a roll-up, you know, if you want to see more of a breakdown of what, what are those things. We can break that, yeah, that could be something we could talk about, coming in just to give a, you know, hey, here's a point in time, here's what we spent this past year, here's what it was spent on, that's easy to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Schools, schools, as I wanted, I want to say a few things here, and I have something at the bottom. Schools, as of this point, is about, has, has, it shows expenses over revenues, that's because I don't include the city's money. So I want to say, before we add any money, how do their non-city revenues stack up to their expenses? And they're about six and a half million dollars over, so, and we've said, well, of course, we're going to give them thirteen and a half million dollars. Now, what's happened, if you remember, at the end of May, they came and said, we have six million or six and a half million dollars more in grants and state and federal revenues than we expected at the beginning of the year, and what they've told us is that most of those are going to, they're going to be carrying over. So the, to the extent the revenue is in, that we're, that's showing up in that blue line, that we received the revenue, we'll have to hold that, hold on to that, right? So that'll actually, you know, I think we're about right at our thirteen and a half million dollars in terms of what the city cost will be.
If they got six and a half, and, and this chart's saying they probably just below there, right?
Well, this chart would say there, there's six and a half million dollars expense over revenue, but if we have to set aside six, about six million dollars.
So out of thirteen million that we're going to plan to give them, why can't we give them half and they'd be even?
Well, no, I think there's an additional amount we're going to have to carry over, I just don't have that amount yet in terms of, I, I've asked them, how much do we need to carry over that you've received but haven't spent? We want to spend for next year, we want to set that aside. We have not had a good communication with them to track that, right? So we're trying to have better communication. I reached out to their finance director yesterday, she said, I'm working on it. And so there's going to be some set aside that's not reflected here, again, because we just, we took things as of June thirtieth and put them up there. So, yeah, we'll have to, we'll come back, and as we come back, we will, we'll want to revisit at the end of the year, where how do we end, how do we actually end the year? So that's what you should see, somewhere around September, maybe the September meeting, we'd have both, here's how we're doing in twenty-five, and oh, by the way, here's how we ended unaudited, how we ended the fiscal twenty-four fiscal year. So schools, yeah, but schools to the extent that they don't need that money, and again, the way this works is that the schools get money from the state and federal government primarily, all comes to us, we hold that money, we, you know, we bank that money, we invest that money. The expenses, all their expenses then run through our major, our primary checking account, right? So it's their accounts payable expenses, their payroll expenses, all run through our accounts payable account. So in reality, even then we say we're giving them money, what we're doing is paying the difference between their total expenses and their total revenues, right? So we're not actually, they don't, they don't control their, they don't control their monies. They don't write checks, right? We write all the checks for them. So that's the treasurer kind of, you know, tracks and writes their checks and tracks their revenues and expenses. And so the schools is a little bit of a different animal. So whatever, whatever it is, it is. Now, the schools have a, has, have had an opinion that if, if they spend less than what we said we're going to give them, well, that's their carryover. We had this conversation just recently, I said, hold on.
They know.
Carryover that you could get is like, hey, we've received money from the federal government that they expect us to spend next year, we need to have that money, it's like, that's fair, but not the difference, right? That kind of gets swept back, back into the city governments.
Yeah, we've had that conversation a couple of times.
Oh, I'm sure you'll have it again.
Everybody knows. Everybody likes to hold on.
Conversation's not over.
Yeah.
All right. So this is the, this is kind of school, the numbers. So I want to point out, let's see, I want to point out a couple of things here, because there's some weird, there's some odd numbers, right? So if you look at federal revenues specifically and state revenues, that delta, we look at what was budgeted in twenty-three, and it looks like, oh, we really got a lot more state money in, but we didn't get any federal money. That is not accurate. So look at twenty-four, and it shows they're very close together. And the reason is, is that in twenty-three, we were not tracking, the federal monies came in and they got coded in as state monies, and so we realized that, and we've, we changed that this year, and we've recoded everything this year, but we had, you know, twenty-three was closed, we didn't go back and do it then, but I just want to point that out because it's a, it's an odd-looking number in terms of, right, why is that, why is there that difference? That's how it actually came out. I was looking at these numbers, and I go, that makes no sense, right? And, and it didn't. So it's just, we, we weren't, it wasn't being coded, federal revenue, just there wasn't a separate code, but now we're tracking that. The other thing I want to point out is on the expected end of year, you look at the actuals, we had booked sixty-two million dollars of expenses, and it does say other, but what that is, we get a single number, it, it, we should code that under services supplies, but we get a single number from the schools of here's how much we spent this month. We have the detail, we do not track it though, like we track, we, their accounting system is not our accounting system. We have different accounting systems. Even when they go to munis, we'll have different accounting systems. So we don't track their accounting, so they say, here's how we spent our money, that comes into our system as a lump sum. For the expected end of year, we added seven million dollars. However, what I, we just got this in for June, and it's closer to eight and a half million, it's a big, June was an expensive month. So that's, that's what I'm talking about. So when we look at the end, right, once everything is processed, it's going to be higher than the seven point four million, and it's, I, I expect it to be very close to our thirteen and a half million that we've put aside. But hopefully it'd be less, that'd be great. Okay. So then I look at just citywide. Now, citywide is helpful, I mean, it's, I, I look at it, right? So how are we doing as a city? But I'll say it has the least value of anything we look at, right? Because what a citywide assumes, you know, it just looks at everything, schools, enterprise funds, general fund, CSA, social services, right? And those things, as we've talked about, have different, you know, just have different restrictions, different uses, they, we, we really do look at them differently. But overall, you know, if you look at just overall, we're getting about, you know, the, they're kind of equal, right? But what do we have? We saw general fund looked like it was more money, enterprise funds looked like it was less money, and so they kind of equal out here, and, let's see, go back to auxiliary slides. I need to go down to the next one. Okay. So here you're about five point six million dollar, you know, difference. Most of that, again, is related to enterprise funds. Most of that, again, is related to enterprise funds and schools, what, what we showed there. So this is, I, I, I don't even know if something we want to keep showing. What it does is it shows all of the money in and out throughout the city, right? How much revenue is coming in? The other interesting thing is transfers, you know, transfers is always an interesting, it's at the bottom of the revenues. And that's money that's kind of coming in and going to different programs, right? So we, we transfer money to the schools, we transfer money to CSA and social services and recreation and those things. And so it, it shows some of this, so it's an interesting number broadly. But just always remember, we don't, we, we have, we deal in funds, right? We're fund accounting, so you have to look at revenues and expenses by fund is what's most interesting.
How many four-time employees do we have, Dr. Maker?
Five hundred and ten.
And this wages, does that include school and city or just city?
Yeah, just city, not schools.
Just, just the city wages?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our payroll was that high?
Yes, it is.
Sorry? And, and it's separated from benefits, health, different?
Yeah, if you want a total personnel cost, it'd be those first five lines.
And does that include the constitutional officers or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all, all staff.
Okay, but we get reimbursed for some of their money, right?
Right, yes, so some of that comes back in as state revenues. And some of this also includes money, this, this on a citywide basis, it includes all the utilities, which then we get paid, utilities pay for those wages and, right?
This total for wages, do you have to extrapolate that, the reimbursement cost from the state? I mean, for those people?
Well, so, yeah, so what, you know, this is again where citywide becomes a little less helpful in terms of, like, but this is what we're paying out. And how do we pay for those people? Where do we get the money to pay for that? It's a combination of, you know, your taxes, charges for service, state revenues, federal revenues, right? It's, it's all these different revenues above.
But when it comes back in, where does it go? To the general fund?
No, so, okay, this is, this is the other important piece, and it's helpful to talk about this here, is when money comes in, it gets coded, this is the treasurer's staff's job. It gets coded into, what is this for? If it's schools money, it gets coded to schools. If it's, you know, if it, if it's water renewal, it gets coded there. Sewer, general fund, it gets coded to these taxes, which stays in the general fund. So then when we look on our financial systems, we can see how much revenue came in by fund, right? By, we can look at by program or by department. So even if it's general fund money, we say, well, how much money came in that was generated by the police, you know, fines? And, you know, whatever, you know, whatever kind of revenue sources they have are, are generated by, you know, parks and rec. They get most of their money from the general fund, but they have some money they generate themselves. So that money gets coded there, so we can track those revenues, and the same thing with expenses, right? So they get coded based on programs. Some people, you know, might work, say, in public works. They might work in two or three different programs of public works. Public works has some general fund things, they have some non-general fund things, they have stormwater, they have refuse, solid waste, and things of that nature. And so we, we code those costs, so the costs also show up where, where they occur. And that way, that's, that allows us to say, what is the general fund revenue and expenses? What's, you know, water renewal, what's sewer, what's CSA, whatever those things are. All those things get coded. So a lot of the work that we do in finance is making sure that everything's coded in the right place, right? That the revenues, so we're, you know, I mean, the treasurer's office does that, we work with them a lot, we work together a lot on making sure when we see something, that, boy, that doesn't look right, where have you coded that? We'll, we'll work that through. Or if they have a question, where does this go? They come to us, or they'll go to, you know, they'd say, I think this is police, let me call police, were you expecting money from a branch or something? So, yes, I was, that goes here, right? So it's, a lot of work goes behind making sure that all the revenues that come in and all the expenses that we have. Now, that happens when you, like, accounts payable check, right? When, when you get an invoice to pay, part of what we, when we process, we make sure that it's getting coded to where that expense is occurring. And that shows up. So that's, so we can, if we, and especially when we trust more and more. I, I trust the system now more than when I first came, and partly because I know the work we've done to change mistakes that were happening in the system. But as you have a system, and there will always be, I mean, we're all humans, humans that run these things, right? So mistakes happen. And so the question is, how do we, what, what are we doing to make sure we catch the checks? And that's monthly reconciliations, which we are not doing very well, which we will be doing better, especially under Stacy will be, you'll be doing those things better. But, you know, we have processes, a place to catch mistakes as well. And so that's, you know, so that's what, when we, then when we look at things, we could say, by program, by fund, you know, what are the revenues, what are the expenses, how do those things match up? And we can look, really, we can look down to the object code level, which means, you know, we, everything has a code associated to it, and we can look either on a citywide basis, a fund basis, you know, any, any kind of basis down to what we call the object code, which is, let's say, office supplies, right? How was our total office supplies, how much office supplies by fund, how much office supplies by department? We can look at all those things in, in different ways. Okay. That is the financials, so this is an example of what you, what you can see every month. The nice thing about seeing that every month is it leads to discussions about seasonality. One of the things that I, you know, we've already started seeing is that we're, we're in a new fiscal year, so what starts happening is expenses accelerate faster than revenues come in, right? So because, so we have debt service payments, we have, you know, schools are still making their payments, and yet their revenues kind of slow down at the beginning of the year, and they catch up and go faster as the year goes on. The city just collected real estate tax, machinery and tools tax, that gets coded for last fiscal year. So for this fiscal year, we have to wait until December fifteenth before we get our next round of taxes, right? And then we have taxes in February and taxes again in June. So the second half of the year, lots of taxes, first half of the year, very little taxes. And so the kinds of things we start to see is, and you'll start to see, like, say, the first, you know, the first few months, is that, oh, our expenses are higher, we brought in, we've spent thirty percent of our expenses, but, oh, we only have ten percent of our revenue, right? And so that's, that's our normal flow of things, it's somewhere around there. So we'll, we'll talk about that as we go through it. So that's the other nice thing about looking at these monthly, is that you get a sense of the seasonality of what happens, and it starts to impress on you a few things, right? Oh, how do we, how do we pay for that when our expenses are faster than our revenue? Well, we've been paying for it because, you know, sewer and water have money, we can use that money to kind of, you know, pay for expenses through the year. But what if they start spending down their money, right? Because they're investing back in their, in the water plant and the sewer system. So we, we just have to start paying attention to things like that. Oh, how do we make sure we always have enough money to pay our bills for this first, you know, five months of the first of the year when we have less revenue coming in to pay for our expenses? Okay, can I move on to draft financial policies? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these, I'm gonna go through these. So I want, what I've done is I went through the policies, and I kind of picked out things that I thought were kind of key points that I want you to think about as you go through, because we want to come back and talk about these policies. And being, and there's some, especially as it relates to reserves and things of that nature. You know, look at this and say, does this make sense for any of the policies, right? Do I, you know, a lot of it matches what we currently do, and do I want to change any of that? Why should we change it? Should we change it? Policies, and this is the key objectives. One of the things it tries to do is saying, here's how we're going to do things. And your council, when we say policies, we're going to say, council has told us, even though we've written the policies, right? Or we've taken policies from somewhere else and we've updated them for the city of Hopewell. We give them to you and say, please bless these policies. And then this becomes, council, in my mind, the policies are always council's voice, right? So even if you didn't write them, we're going to ask you to say, do these make sense? Do you want these to be your policies? So the main reason is we want to say, if we do things right, if we think about things in a proper way, we can help insulate ourselves from a fiscal crisis. And that could be because we have the right number of reserves, right? If, if you think about, especially, you know, we're old enough here. You go back just twenty, you know, twenty years to the great, you know, the Great Recession. You know, cities that didn't have reserves, we're in a world of hurt, especially, you know, especially in areas, like I was in California at the time. In areas of California that were built on huge housing booms, were just crushed, right, by the Great Recession, it's just huge drop in value. And so that's the kind of thing that reserves, in terms of a fiscal crisis, fiscal crises will come at some point. Are you ready, right? So it's a, part of it's just thinking, something's going to happen at some point, right? What do we need to have in the bank to make sure? We do, we should have this with our own personal, right, revenues? What happens if I lose my job? What happens if my, I guess the good positive, what happens if my kid gets into Yale? How am I going to pay for that? I'll say, my thing, I told the kid, you can't go to Yale. They didn't get in anyway, but no, you can't, no, you're going to go to something we can afford. But that's another choice, right? What if we can do this, can we afford it? Right, so these are questions that policies help give us some structure to. So then we as staff can go back and say, well, this is what we do, this is what councils told us to do. And so then you should expect, if we need to deviate from a policy, we're going to come back to you and ask. And we better have a good reason to do that. Hey, we need to use our reserves for this purpose. We need to, you know, whatever this is, right? We have a deviation, so staff needs to know the policies, need to buy by the policies. You should see at least an annual report on how are we meeting your policies, right? What is the, and we'll talk about a few of these, where you set a policy, say, on debt. And I'll tell you where we currently are, and that's just the kind of thing of, hey, we have this policy that debt shouldn't be more than five percent of our assessed value, how are we doing, right? What is it now? And so those kinds of things, we'd want to see that. If you have policies, you follow your policies, your credit's going to be better, you're going to have better long-term financial stability. You know, and again, this with anything, if you set goals, you want to do this, it's amazing how you can meet those goals. And if you don't set goals, you almost always meet them, right? Because nothing happens. If you're not setting goals, and you're not trying to get anywhere, you generally don't get anywhere. And so we're saying policies also have some, oftentimes some kind of, let's, let's reach, right? Here's where we want to be, here's our goal, let's make this our policy of how we get there. Want to direct attention to the total financial, you know, picture of the city, not just one thing. We do have lots of things going on here. Oh, thank you very much. We want to link long-term planning to day-to-day operations. That's why I go by, this is, hey, we're, we have some long-term views, we're trying to link those back into, what does that mean on a day-to-day basis? Provided fame work for measuring the fiscal impact of services, right? Against established fiscal parameters and guidelines. So again, we're trying to, you know, that's what we're trying to do. And that means maybe this doesn't, maybe there's something missing you really want to do, or maybe there's something we're saying, this should be our policy, you say, we don't want that to be our policy, we want something else. That's why I want you to read it and think about that. Because ultimately, you know, what you want to do, what staff wants to do, is make sure you have enough resources to provide services for the city. And that's what tax holders, you know, deserve, right? Is the best service as possible from the resources you have. And it's difficult for cities that have lower assessed value bases, right? It just, you know, it, the city economically is poorer than some cities around us. So that makes it tougher for you, but it also means, I think, you have to pay more attention to, what are we doing? Why aren't we doing it? How do we fund it? And what should our policies be? So that's what this is trying to get at, it's a very lofty, some lofty views of that. But let's talk about then, some, I just selected things in the budget policy, right? One, no expense can exceed council set appropriations limit. This has not always been held in the city, but this is, I mean, and it, I'll say, here's the other thing, I'll say, this has been your policy. This is in your budget ordinance.
Yes.
So this is not a new policy. This is just saying, this is, we just want to be clear on this.
They will follow it.
Right, so we want also to say, it's our policy that, hey, if there's some big thing going on, we want to hear about it earlier in the budget process rather than later. Hey, we're going to have to use reserves this year because we have this big capital project coming up and not enough money. That could be something, right? Let's talk about, it's just saying, our policy is, we want to hear about that earlier in the process rather than later in the process. Current revenues will fund current expenditures. This gets a little trickier than you might think, and I, this policy is everywhere, it's really hard to follow. That just means that we're going to say, you know, if you have an ongoing expense, we want to fund that with ongoing revenues, not one-time revenues. So we don't want to say, this is, let's say, an ARPA, which I don't think this city did, but I saw cities do it. We got ARPA monies, right, American Recovery Plan Act, and we use those to fund current operations, right? To increase pay or do something else. Well, that's one-time money, that, that's gone in a couple of years, then what? Right, so this is just saying, look, if we're, we have expenditures, especially if we're taking new programs or expansions, that we want to make sure we have ongoing money to pay for that. And that could be from, you know, any, whatever the source. That's just a very broad, a broad statement. Want a city policy to aggressively seek a collection of delinquent taxes, because that's when we budget. How do we get it back? And the treasurer's going to talk about our, how we do that. And then proposed budget presented to city council by April first, which is currently our policy. But I'd also want to include on that, I, I talked about it later, having the regional, the water renewal budget also done by commission prior to April first as well. So that's, again, these are selected highlights, ask you to read through those. So when we come back, when Stacy comes back to talk about these, you'll have a better sense of what's going on. Finance committee, that's, that's you all, right? Meets monthly, here we go, to review the city's financial affairs, tracking revenues and expenditures, reconcile cash position of all accounts. We want to look no longer than two months old, so that would be something we'd be adding, you know, what's our cash position of accounts? We have established pooled, pooled cash fund in our city, we're operating that, the, where we should get this week. We'll have an updated fund balances. So it's not something I could talk to you about tonight, but especially once we get our audits in, we will talk about, here's how much money we have in each of our different funds. So it's additional money, the additional information that could come to you. Compliance with financial policies would be something that could be presented in the finance committee and review of strategic investment plan, which we'll talk about later. And that, as I know, is something that the treasurer is also wanting to do. Capital improvement policy, we develop a five-year capital plan. We'll have one for this, I, I need to apologize, we're very close on getting you a budget document. We, we use ClearGov as the base with, and we, with a few enhancements. But there's some things we needed from them that weren't looking right, and I think we'll have it, hopefully by next week, we'll get it. So they, I think they're supposed to fix those things by tomorrow. We'll see. The first year of a CIP and a five-year plan is usually what you're funding, right? And the rest is what we plan to fund or want to fund in the future. Future operating expenses, we talk about on the budget side. And one of the things I'm going to do is I'll continue on for a little while. Once I'm done, the interim finance director is complete a five-year budget forecast that I, that I started on, and I'll provide that model to, to the city for future use. But, but you, these, the CIP is also saying, okay, this is our plan, how, can we fund what we think we're going to fund in future years? We want the CIP to include maintenance and replacement schedules, not just big capital projects. What maintenance do we need in the future? Super important. And this is something, this gets into the reserve thing, that there's this crossover, that after meeting target reserves, we're saying the city will budget a minimum half-million-dollar pay-go-capital project. So that's something to think about, we'll talk about that. This is, it could be, again, aspirational. All of these things, because they're council action, you can change their council action, right? Based on, does it make sense now? But it does in the future, we want it higher, lower, we don't want to do that, whatever that is. I just want to point that out.
Mr. Branson, for that last one, for capital projects, what on average do cities or localities do in terms of capital projects per their budget? The reason that I'm asking is certain businesses are, you know, the best practice model is to dedicate X percent to go back into capital into their business. So that way, they're continuing to refine operations and they can, you know, reduce. So that way, they're continuing to refine operations, and they can, you know, reduce, you know, overdue maintenance costs.
Yes, and I think a lot of cities want to do that, I don't think many cities do. And part of the reason is because current operations have so much call to be, you know, for money. So for example, we, you know, do you wanna put in, I mean, this is the kind of thing you get, you're putting money aside, now you're building up this big, you know, big fund, but the police are saying we're not paid enough, right? So that's, you have that tension that you have in every city. I've done, I have done some studies for cities and talked about, you know, the best practice is somewhere around two to three percent of a building's value you set aside each year to maintain, right? You have roofs, you have HVACs, you have, you know, floors and all this kind of stuff. So you always have enough money to maintain these things. You have old facilities here that you haven't always invested in because you don't have the money to invest, and things are starting to happen, right, to those facilities, where do you get that money? So the best practice, if you're, A, best practice would be to say, yes, set money aside for maintenance, have this maintenance plan, what do we really need? At least, and that's the first place to start from my mind, what are we, what are we gonna need over time to maintain our facilities? I think it'll be shockingly more than you expect. But, and if you think about, two percent of value that over, you know, over fifty years, you, you have a replacement, right? You've kind of reinvested in that building. It's hard for cities to do, just because the different tensions of providing enough service versus setting money aside for capital, I generally find that service wins out, for better or for worse. So I think cities that have a lot of money do this better than cities that don't have as much money, right? Just because it's harder to do it if you don't have money. It's harder to set aside money for a replacement car if you can barely afford the car you have, right? And so that's, I, I think that it's definitely a good practice. That's why if you go back and, or look at this, that have a replacement schedule, look at your, look at your, you know, what your capital needs are, put that in a five-year plan, looking at all your revenue sources to meet those, and that starts a discussion of how do we balance these competing needs? Because you should invest in the city, absolutely you should invest, so you're not having things fall apart. Because that's, you know, I mean, you've seen, especially, say, go back to the Great Recession, or times when people are really struggling, they take out a play structure to park, and they can't replace it, because I don't have $200,000 for place, or whatever they are now, right, that play structure. And that's, that's a difficult thing to do, right? Because that starts, just, you know, that starts hitting at the area where you need to really invest. Or there's a town near where I lived that had an eighty-year-old fire station, their, their main fire station, and they got a leak in the roof, they couldn't fix the roof. So they had to ban then that station, and then it was gonna cost them $20 million to replace the station, they didn't have that money, right? So you wanna avoid, you like to avoid those kind of crises, and you do that by planning, you either would say, what are our needs, how much is that gonna cost, how do we fund it, how much can we fund it? So the $500,000 is partly saying, hey, set some money aside. The $500,000's not for here, not based on anything in particular, but it's, you know, so you could maybe get a better number if you have maintenance or replacement schedules, and you have capital schedules. But I think it's, you know, all these things are discussions, I just don't see in the near future, in the next, you know, next few years, hopefully having to have to spend money on all the things you need to spend money on. And so you have to have discussions of how do we balance these things?
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking is because I remember when Mr. Sanderson was here, he said, you know, develop your policies for the goals that you wanna set. So like our target reserve should be, you know, that sixteen and two-thirds percent that Alvarez-Marcel, I think you said another-
That's GFOA.
Yeah, you know, has, you know, set out and recommend. So you set that out, and then in your policy say that you wanna hit such percentage moving up, till you hit that number.
Right.
And that you may not be able to hit that number, you're right off the bat, but the credit agencies will look at that and say, yes, you are meeting, you know, your goals, so therefore, you know, we're gonna look more favorably upon your, your ratings. And that's why I just, you know, I wanted to, you know, ask on the half a million, you know, whether that's just, you know, a number that you're putting there for a conversation starter, or if you, you know, some-
Yeah, it's more of a conversation starter versus that number, that number would be different based on the size, like, this wouldn't work for New York City, right?
Right.
And it may not even work for you, but it's, it's a lot more than you put now.
Well, that's also, I don't think $500,000's gonna work well, being that if you look at what you showed us previously in our budgets-
Right.
And you just look at the deplorable state that our infrastructure got into, because our previous city managers and finance directors just did not prioritize capital improvements, period. I mean, no real or legitimate cap improvement plan, I'd say at least for, you know, the past seven, eight years.
So when you look at these, one of the values of having this as your policy, is then the finance director comes back and says, hey, here's your policy, we're not able to do it this year because, you know, or, or here's your policy, you know, we're at $100,000 this year, and we were nothing last year, we're $200,000, whatever, right? It's that, if you have a policy to do something, you're gonna stretch towards that, if your policy is nothing, then that, that's typically what you're gonna do, is nothing.
Right.
So yeah, the policies, they're, they can be aspirational, but also just, it provides a feedback loop. Remember, you told us this, wanna report back on where we are.
Right.
Okay, debt, you know, you're, you're gonna use debt because you don't have the money, right? So you don't have current revenues to buy something, that, that's when, you know, that's when we use debt, that's when we have used debt. So we talked about direct net debt as a percentage of assessed value, this would be for non-utility debt, will not exceed five percent, right? The state limit is ten percent, so it's a little more stringent, partly because debt can really be a killer, right, if you have other issues, right? Because you gotta pay your debt. And so you're now less than three percent, just a little less than three percent, so you're within that level. And then ratio of net debt service to total government fund expenditures shall not exceed ten percent, you're currently at four percent with that. So your, your debt ratios are, you know, are okay, and again, there's probably more things to look at in debt, and we could, you can look at that section and see if there's other things we wanna add. Okay, reserves, we started talking about that, we're actually recommending twenty percent. Now, a little of this, in twenty percent, I don't know if exactly is the right number, we talked about GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends at least two months' operation, which is, that's sixteen and point seven percent roughly. Twenty percent's a little higher than that, partly because, because what they also say, it says sixteen point seven plus any risk-related amounts you wanna add. So what, what are our risks, right? One risk, I think one risk is, is infrastructure failure, right? We've seen that on Winston Churchill, right? You have stuff that's old, and there hasn't been a lot of investment, so it starts falling apart, and all of a sudden it's like, oh, we can't not fix this. So you want some reserves for that kind of stuff. We also have issues with, in terms of, you might lose an industry, right? And there, I, you know, I, I can't, I'm not a, I'm not a person to judge whether they will or won't leave, but a lot of times you hear that a lot, when you're talking about wanting more money, right? Well, if we pay more money, we may have to leave, and they might, I don't know. That's a risk, right? And you have lost an industry, we have some vacant parcels from lost industry, so it's a true risk. And so one of the things I'd say is, let's, you know, we're recommending like a twenty percent, but over time, we wanna actually probably take a little more detailed look at that amount, and try to quantify some of your overall risks more, and say, is that the right amount? Now, we also are saying budget stabilization fund of five percent, so if you look at these, it starts adding up, right? Now, that's, the unassigned fund balance just means, hey, we can spend this, that's extra money that we've kept. The stabilization fund is kind of like what you have right now with your rainy day fund. And the rainy day fund is closer to, you know, it's closer to ten percent, nine percent of the general fund budget. And so that's a committed fund balance, means we set aside as a rainy day fund, it's, it's targeted for that. And we'd wanna use that for emergency expenditures after we use unassigned fund balances, right? So that's kind of the last line of defense, which is kind of what it is now. The other thing you wanna talk about, if we use reserves, how quickly do we want to replenish them? So what that means is, yes, we, we've had an issue, we've had to use our reserves, but now we're gonna spend more money to, to pay them back. And this is saying twenty-four months, which would be the basic level, but you can always change that if that's unattainable. So reserves is that, that's a, and that's a tough one, right? How do you pay reserves back? It's an important aspect of reserve policies. And then we're also saying, this gets a little back, Mayor Parton, to what you're saying, try to set aside a capital reserve, that'd be that $500,000 that we're trying to add, and we say, to get to like a $3 million reserve, and that can be used for things like, we, you know, again, Winston Churchill, that's a million, we have somewhere else that had similar kind of problem, I don't, I don't think that's as much, but that's gonna be a few hundred thousand dollars all at the same time, right? That, but you'd also, something you look at on an annual basis, what do we need, this could also be used if you're gonna sell, you know, if you're gonna issue new debt, kind of easing in the payments, so it's not a hit all it wants to, you know, need to increase, so we're not having to issue debt and increase property tax, real estate taxes, something like that, right? So we'd have some ways of teasing that in. So when you read that, so when you read that section, right, there's a couple different kinds of debt, and it all adds up to about, actually about twenty-eight percent. So it's a, it's definitely a, a higher amount, and it's definitely a reach amount for the city. You don't have to meet it day one, right? But these are the goals, the things we're gonna work for, and again, it gets reported back to you, and we talk about, how do we do this, what's our plan for doing this?
So when the rating agencies look at our balance sheets, and they wanna see, you know, what our goals are, they're gonna include, when we say, you know, we're shooting for, you know, a total reserve of, you know, I think you said, what, twenty-eight percent, if you include the debt service one at the bottom? They're gonna look at twenty-eight percent versus just twenty percent, like, off the first one. Am I understanding that correct?
Right, yeah, they look at the whole thing.
Okay.
And, yeah, they look at, where are you going, how are you meeting that, are you doing it? And I, I'll say, because I've done a lot of rating agency presentations and issued a lot of debt, and, and they look at management. I mean, that is, that's probably more important, and it's a part of these, right? Are you setting goals, are you meeting your goals? Do people understand what they're doing? Are you doing what you say you're gonna do? So I think writ large, policies are very important, following those policies are very important, managing those policies are very important.
Okay.
All those things are important in that regard. Okay, so expenditures, this is a little bit, you know, this is very, fairly broad. Manage total cash to limit borrowing, so we try to set aside money if we can, pay-go is better than debt, because you don't have interest on it if you can do it. Fund capital with a balanced approach of debt and pay-go if you can, right? So you try to, again, that, that would be true of general fund as well as, you know, schools, there's gonna be a need for probably more debt in a few years. Water renewal and sewer as well. We're gonna prevent monthly financial reports, so you're seeing what's going on with your expenditures. There's the other one, this, this is by, you know, I think by state laws, as I understand it, is that if we have a big appropriation amendment, that's one percent of total expenditures or more, it's gonna have to be approved by public hearing. So this is different, we didn't do a public hearing when we got the water renewal, we probably should have, right? I mean, based on this policy, you'd have to, right? Because it was more than one percent of their, I think, you know, I think I would look at it as more of their total budget since they're enterprise fund. And so again, it just allows things, if things are changing, we're gonna give the public an opportunity to come and hear, let them know, time to talk about this. So transparency is also a part of the financial policies, you know, we're trying to encourage transparency. And then all appropriation slaps on the thirtieth of each fiscal year, which is also in our budget ordinance. Okay, I'm gonna go through these a little quickly, because I know I wanna give, you know, Shannon has some things to talk about. But I've added in regional water, it's like water renewal, I've messed this up so much, it's HWR, I know, sorry I didn't catch that. But the budgeting for operations and capital, that's talked about in that policy, annual trups and use of, you know, we still haven't changed it, miscellaneous revenue, in quotes, and then having a facility maintenance program, which I know they've started on this, and I think that Director Harrison will continue that approach, I really liked his approach on those things. Other utilities, rate setting level and frequency, we haven't increased sewer rates in seven years, that's not, it's not good management because costs have gone up, and it's also really difficult for users to have a big rate increase versus a lot of small rate increases that follow cost increases, right? So to set a, probably set a sewer rate stabilization reserve, we do have some money in a sewer rate stabilization reserve in our local government investment program, and then, and as, again, a system maintenance plan for, on the sewer side as well. So a lot of this is just trying, is saying, council's saying, hey, departments, we wanna know what's coming, we wanna know what the, you know, what our risks are, we wanna know what the future costs are, right? You should wanna know that, some councils don't wanna know this, right? And that's, and I don't, that's not the sense I get from this council, that you actually, you do wanna know, so that way you can plan and set goals. Okay, investments, and this is one where, you know, this needs to be hashed out with the treasurer, so I've put this in, I think they have some things, so we've talked about this, but, so as we go through this, these are, this is fairly standard stuff, investment objectives nationally are always, safety, you wanna keep your money, liquidity, when I need my money to pay bills, I need to have access to it, and then I look at return. So return is never, it's never reversed, right? So I'm never looking at return first, first I look at safety and liquidity, and then return. There's a standard of care, prudent ethics, no conflicts of interest, you know, there's issues on safekeeping, delivery investments, we don't have these kind of investments now, but my hope is that you have enough money, where you're able to have, you know, a broader investment portfolio that will actually keep safekeeping and delivery investments. What's, what's authorized, what can, you know, be, your investments be, your investment approach, maturity, investment of bond proceeds. Now, again, this will be done with, and I think we'll probably be coming back with, making sure that the treasurer is on board with this, or, you know, modify that based on other things. This is a pretty generic set of policies right now, but it just, so it gives you a sense of the kinds of things that you should be seeing and given some direction on. Okay, procurement, we added in, we, we sent, I sent just today, I didn't even look at that all, it's a very long, policies and procedures for the P-card use. We'll also get procurement policies, we, we'll have to come back, we'll be, continue to do more policies. But it's, you know, who has them, how do they have them, what, you know, what, what do you have to do, what do you have to pay attention to, how do you lose your card, and there's lots of ways to lose your card, and I have a current procurement team that is on that, that is really looking at this very carefully, so I'm really happy about that. And it's like, hey, we use this to streamline our, our ability to buy new things, it's a, you know, it's a privilege, and it's not to be, you know, it's not to be used for personal gain or anything else, and so we're both, we have to be both clear on that as well as follow-up on our own rules, so that's important.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, and then last is annual reviews, we, these should come back with some kind of annual review, I'm saying January, but whenever that is, to look at these once a year and say, what's changed?
Question? The public works in garage, when they use their P-card to order parts, I would imagine, does that attach to the license or the VIN number to a city vehicle, or they can just go out and purchase it? If I wanted to buy my transmission for my car, how would I know the difference?
So that's, I, I just wanna say, I'm not aware of that other happening, somebody buying the transmission for their own car. And that's one of the things where the, what happens with the P-cards, that you use it, you, you attach the invoices, it has to be approved by your supervisor, right?
So it's matched up with the vehicle that you own in the car?
It's not, I don't know if, I don't know offhand if it's matched up with the vehicle, it's definitely matched up with the department vehicle, and it might be, I just can't tell you offhand-
Okay.
-what they put on that, I just don't know. But I'm saying there's, the process that we have in place is meant to prevent any kind of fraud or misuse, right? So if, if everything is working, that's where our staff and what they're empowered to do, if people aren't doing what they're supposed to do, we're gonna take away their card, at the very least, right? And, and they don't get that privilege anymore.
So how can they do their job then if they can't use a P-card? Can they do that?
Well, if they, if they need a P-card to do their job, but they can't use their P-card correctly, then that's with them, that's between them and their supervisor. I'm less concerned about what they need to do their job, and for the finance perspective, we're concerned about, here's our policies and procedures, are you following them? And, you know, the procedure is, you have to reconcile your account, which means I put in my expenses, I get my, here's my expenses, here's my, every receipt I have that matches that expense. So you can see that what I spent is here, here's where it goes, in terms of what fund. If I'm not doing- If I'm not doing that, I'll lose my card.
And my job.
Yeah, and you may lose your job. And that's like, you know, that is not my concern on the finance perspective. Cause that's, there should be their concern, so they should follow the rules. So, yeah, so that's the, we, if that's the case, if someone's that critical, then they should definitely follow the rules. Just like if you have a job, you're supposed to show up every day and you show up every other day. You're probably gonna lose your job, right? So you should, you follow the rules. So that's, and but we also wanna enforce the rules. That's, that's the finance part of this. Alrighty, so really quickly, Stacy will be here in August. And so she may have new items to bring. You know, we'll follow up on financial policies. There'll be an update, I mean, Robert, Bob talked about this today. So hopefully by that time we'll be have, you know, have a discussion possibly then on past audits and where we were. And then talk about the 24 audit process. That's something that UHY is also helping us with, prepare for the 24 audit as we go in. So there may be other things that come up. If you have things you want us to talk about or, you know, that's also, please let us know. And then, I mean, I'll go through all business and then I'll let, just HR. We talked about this, regional water, true-up analysis. May come to council the 23rd. I'm thinking it's gonna come in August because we, they're supposed to have given us something that we're not gonna have time to review and get through legal review. Commissioner revenues in process of implementing the cigarette tax. And then I talked about, see that I did HWR correctly there? Is developing RFP for a new, a new rate study. And then, so any other questions? I'll turn it over to...
Are there any questions online for Mr. Branson? Or Counsel Holloway or Counsel Joyner?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you, thank you so much.
So. I do not see Commissioner Revenue here tonight, but Treasurer is here. And so I just, and I just wanna say, it's been really a joy having them both at the Finance Committee meetings. They're really helpful and beneficial.
Before you have our delinquents' tax report, now that I would like to present to you guys. After I present, I do have Neka, my accountant, who will be presenting our cash flow. But I will move forward in the delinquent report at this point. Okay, due to significant numbers of delinquencies for various types of accounts. The Treasury Office have decided to partner with several collection agencies to make sure that we can get our delinquencies in control. Next slide. We have here our personal property machinery tools and public service tax. If you go to the middle side, we will show where we were. So from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two, we were in a delinquency of seven billion, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred twenty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Jesus.
And I have here a graph that basically shows us what were originally built. The abatement or adjustments that the Commissioner Revenue Office has provided us. As well as what was the actual collectible, what we collected. As well as what is delinquent at this time for two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two. And again, this is personal property machinery tools and public service all together.
What, excuse, let's go back. What, what are all the footnotes with that, the red A B T? What does all that mean?
Right, so if you look at the original, the blue, the first blue, we have sixty-one million dollars that were, was originally built from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And then the second line item that you see, abatement, so the adjustment. So what's that, what that is, is if there was any, like exemptions, disabled veterans or any elderly release for this, for this segment here. The Commissioner did provide the total of the adjustments that were made throughout those particular years.
Okay, so that was kinda written off, I mean, taken away from the total revenue.
So as you see, the next blue line is the actual collectibles, managing those abatements.
Okay, and then the next line represent?
And then the yellow does represent what we collected throughout those particular years.
And thus, we're short collecting the seven point seven.
Seven million, seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars.
Seven point eight, okay. Can you get, can you tell us how much we collected so far?
Yes, so for those particular years, from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two, our report shows that we've collected fifty-three million, fifty-six thousand, ninety-five, forty dollars and seventy-seven cents. For those particular years. Okay, so with the personal property, we did partner with TACS back in November of two thousand and twenty-three. They are only at this time assisting us with the collections of personal property tax. So if we do go to the next slide, you will see a, a graph of what TACS will provide us weekly. And it will give us, as you see here, it was in the first box, two thousand and twenty-three. It gives us basically the amount they collected when they first started to as of June thirtieth of this year. So TA, TACS has collected or sent back to us a million, eleven thousand, ninety thousand, thirty-five dollars towards the personal property collection from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two. Alright, so then the next slide basically gives us where we are right now. I have here the first box, again, here two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two. And then we have in the second box there is what our study, our reports is for two thousand and twenty-three collection. Two thousand and nineteen to twenty-two, I can say for personal property. And probably as you will see when we get closer to business licenses, we can say COVID. You can see the difference from the much higher compared to now. I can say COVID probably definitely impacted that as well as those citizens moving from the city. And we are unable to locate them particular vehicles. So this is the comparison from then until like now. And as you see, for two thousand and twenty-three, we have a delinquency of a million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, let me do that again, one million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cent. Now with the, now keep in mind, this is also personal property machinery tools and public service. But if, as we know, it's a bulk of personal property because we do not have a lot of machinery tools and public service delinquencies. So with the personal properties now, yes, we do have TACS. I wanted to see if we can coordinate with the police, the police with maybe doing some towings of, or seizures of the vehicles and doing an, or putting it in an impound and allowing the citizens to take care of the expenses of the particular vehicles. That is a collection method that the Treasurers do have. And that is something that I would like to definitely present to you guys to see if that would be an option. Moving to the next slide. Alright, so we have the businesses here in the city. And going back, remember that the statute of limitation for personal property is five years and as well as business licenses. So from as of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, it does look like we had a, a six billion dollar delinquency. Six million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cent of delinquencies for business licenses. Now with the business license, because we had so many of the delinquencies, we did hire the Virginia Auction. They are another collection method that we have. The Virginia Auctions have the authority to go in and be like a bounty hunter to those particular businesses who are delinquent. And they have been placing distress and seizure notations on their businesses saying, hey, if you don't pay now, this is what's gonna happen. So that is definitely in place at this time. And if we go to the next slide, you can see a comparison of the years in the past to what we have done. And again, I am gonna blame it on COVID perfectly as far as why it was so high in reference of the numbers. As well as the businesses closing and we now trying to find where they are. And then as you see for two thousand and twenty-four, you can see how much we built and what we have in delinquencies at this time. As you see, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars amongst the delinquencies that we will still attempt to collect for two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide. Now, as we, as I stated, we did hire Virginia Auction. And as of last week, it does look like Virginia Auction has brought back to the city three thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. So they are doing an awesome job with bringing the money back in. And they just started, I say, two weeks ago.
And how much of that do you pay them?
Now, that is a question that we, we have to ask them when in reference of how they're collecting and what they're charging us. Because it's supposed to definitely be the twenty percent, just like TACS and Jason Dunn. But if Shadaro could come up, I want you to just explain what you, and guess, this is Shadaro, our delinquent tax collector. And if you could just explain the part in reference of what you found on the part of Virginia Tax and how you're gonna research that from.
Good evening, everybody. So Virginia Tax, it is a twenty percent. And we will collect the funds once the citizens do come into our office and give them this, and just same process as we do for Jason Dunn, which you'll see on the slide. So it's a twenty percent on top of their, their bill.
So the, the amount you showing is the amount you would get, thirty-one hundred, whatever.
Right.
And the citizen will pay twenty percent of, over that amount.
Right, so if the citizen comes in and they're delinquent and say their account is a hundred dollars, from there, we just add the twenty percent right then there and they pay it. And then we, we will write the Virginia Auction a check.
A good twenty dollars.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so next slide, and this is our real estate. We're going towards our real estate. Now, as we will see, when we get ready to go towards our real estate, personal property was a lot more. Because remember, we have a lot of more vehicles versus the homes. So as you'll see, we, we have to collect for twenty years for, it's actually limitation for real estate. And as you see, we are delinquent overall of five hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. And this particular amount is coming with our, our collection attorney, which is Jason Dunn. Next slide. Now, as you see. Okay, as you see, from two thousand and two to two thousand and twenty-two, we again had a, a large amount of delinquencies. Jason Dunn has done a tremendously great job. We hired him back in two thousand and twenty. And he has came and showed and approved when it comes down to his collections, bringing back the funds. So as you see, for the twenty years, we are delinquent once again, five hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Going towards two thousand and twenty-three, we did build twenty-one million dollars. We collected twenty million dollars. So for two thousand and twenty-three at this time, we do have a delinquency of two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars at this moment. And then with two thousand and twenty-four, keep in mind, we just, we just finished the first half. And we're getting ready to move forward and collecting the second half as of December the fifth. So the next three slides is just basically explaining the different collection agencies that we have, which is Virginia Auction, Jason Dunn and Sands Anderson. Now, in our previous Finance Committee meeting, I did address Sands Anderson. And I do believe someone mentioned Sands Anderson earlier today. But I was mentioning to the Finance Committee is, as we see, if we move to the next slide, Jason Dunn has again brought back over, if I look at this, over, I'd say, two million dollars back to the city since he's been here. And then Sands Anderson has been here longer than I have. And as you see, they have not touched half of the money that Jason Dunn has. So I wanted to, I gotta speak upon that and get with, and also research with Sands Anderson to see, you know, if they're still in contract, do we still need them? Do we still have parcels that still with them? So we would not have to keep on having them as one of our collection attorneys. And we can stick with just Jason Dunn.
You haven't seen the contract for Sands Anderson?
I have not seen.
Is there one city manager or, I don't know, attorney wouldn't know?
No, the procurement office has the research. It may have been something in place many years prior.
So probably should have been repeated every five years anyway, right? So that means there need to be, y'all need, we, do we make that decision?
For, for, you mean, as the city uses?
As the Finance Committee make a recommendation that whatever accounts they have, they turn them over. If they're not gonna work them, turn them over to the other young company. If they're not working them?
I agree. And for example, like the Anchor Point. Did I say that right? The houses over there with Cameron landing.
Yes, Anchor Point.
Okay. So Sands Anderson had reached out to us maybe like a year ago and asked if we could stop collecting for them or, uh, uh, so Sands Anderson wouldn't start, I guess, continue to collect for them because they were supposed to, the, let me get this right, guys. Another company was supposed to buy over Anchor Point, Hudson Company or something like that. And the, the offer failed through. So Sands Anderson came to me and asked if I cannot continue to collect for them because of that. But then the offer did not go through. And now Sands Anderson has the bulk of these properties, but not doing anything with the property. So that's the question that I have. Can we just get rid of Sands Anderson and put it all to Jason Dunn and let Jason Dunn do his work?
No, he's not performing. I mean, who, whose decision? Is it the Finance Committee?
I, I think it's actually the Treasurer's decision. She can reach out to Jason Dunn and ask for those properties. She has the authority. The Treasurer already has the authority to do that.
If they're not performing, don't fiddle with them.
I agree. Okay, so next slide. Now, it's basically giving us the overall, what Jason Dunn, Sands Anderson and Virginia Auction has collected at this time. And then we have a overall two thousand and twenty-three for personal property, real estate, what was originally built, what was abated, what was, what was the actual collectible? And then what was, what is delinquent? And again, we already went over this in the other slides. We are overall delinquent in personal property, a million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cent. And then real estate right now for two thousand and twenty-three, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars. And that goes with the same with two thousand and twenty-four. If we go to the next slide, we have our delinquencies overall. If you go to the next slide, um, we have our delinquencies overall for twenty twenty-four. And that is all for my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'll be willing to answer those at this point.
How do you be delinquent with the business license if you have a business?
You said, how can?
I mean, I know they can be delinquent, but, so is that your, whose responsibility is to collect the money from the business? You or?
The Commissioner, so it's, so it's both of our responsibilities. The, the Commissioner Revenue Office is, as you know, from January to March, the business is supposed to come out and renew their business. Now, there's some businesses out there that decide not to renew. So yes, the Treasurer have to go in and we have to send out letters saying, hey, you're responsible for this. If you don't, you will not be able to move forward with your business. Now, there are some businesses out there as we speak that are operating and they do not have a business license. So to my understanding, the Commissioner and the Treasurer is supposed to go together to be able to, uh, get them to pay these properties.
Okay, I'm sorry. So do y'all do that?
No, not at this time, the Commissioner or the Treasurer doesn't have to do that. We, right now, we have, um, again, Virginia Auction that just started two weeks ago to basically go out there and.
That's for the cars, so not for the business license.
Those aren't the businesses. So the Virginia Auction is strictly for the businesses.
Okay.
T H C S is for the personal property. And Jason Dunn is for real estate.
Oh, okay.
All right, any other questions, uh, for the Treasurer? Uh, Councilor Joyner or Councilor Dominic Holloway?
No, I, I don't have any questions. Everything very clear, I appreciate it.
Ms. Foskey, I'd go back and just double check with the Commissioner's office because I do think that they go back out and they do, uh, try to, you know, hunt down the business owners that don't have a, uh, a license. I think the problem that they come into, and maybe this is something, um, Dr. uh, Dr. Manker, you know, Chief Taylor needs to, and, uh, maybe the sheriff work with them, is, you know, maybe have a, I mean, I had to say an armed escort, uh, with them because, you know, if you're not going to pay your taxes, you're not going to have a legitimate business license then, and you're not willing to come in and you take care of things, you know, the kosher way, you know, you might have to, you know, look at revoked and stuff.
And that is true, and that is something that we can do, and we can have the Sheriff to go out and do that. Um, for example, I can just give you one. We have El Napo, the Mexican restaurant, right? If, uh, they were delinquent thirty thousand dollars. We start sending out the letters and they came in and rung us ten thousand and twenty thousand. So the letters were within their song that's out there that really not paying it. So what do we do? Do we go and say, hey, I'm going to take everything out of your cash, your, um, your draw? Or, and we're going to, um, uh, put a sticker in saying, you cannot operate until you pay your taxes? And that's something that I don't mind doing it. It's just, we got, we got to be in the Commissioning to come in and do it.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think you guys need to come together. Yeah, do something together. And then, you know, just in this day and time, I just, I highly recommend, you know, making sure that you guys, you know, have either sheriff's deputy with you or police officers with you. If, you know, the letters don't work, when you have to go and approach the, um, the business owners. Councilor Denton?
Um, my understanding is that you, um, for a business license, the Commissioner Revenue does not have the power to do anything to that business if they do not pay their tax, if they are not paying their tax.
Well, they have some, some, something to do with it, and I will be right back with you guys tomorrow. And as you know, um, they have some authority to do as far as, um, renewing their business if they haven't paid it. They, they have some sort of authority when it comes in. Now, I have a complete authority to, if you don't pay your delinquent taxes, I have authority to literally go in and take their money out of the cash drawer or take the sheriff out and say, hey, I'm going to close your business. So yes, I have that authority. But yes, the Commissioner does have some sort, some, some part of it, but I will definitely get back to you with that.
Okay, find out who has the power to say, if you don't get a business license, we can shut you down.
Yes, ma'am. Now, the Commissioner has, that's it right there.
I know they, they've got a list.
Yeah.
That they know who is not paying for their business license. But my understanding was they don't have the authority to tell them, we're going to shut your doors.
Okay.
So find out for me.
I will.
I'd appreciate it.
I'll be back with you guys.
And if there's a gap in the law that needs to be addressed, that's a great opportunity as, um, our Legislative Committee is going to be meeting here, I think, in the next couple of weeks, uh, that we can pass a recommendation off to, uh, Councilor Joyner and Vice Mayor Gorda, um, you know, put something in our packet for the State House to look at.
Yeah.
The law's already there. Sounds like the law is already there.
That's what I'm saying, if there's a gap.
Yeah, if there is.
That needs to be addressed.
Well, I'll be back with you guys tomorrow and shortly.
All right, uh, is it Dr. Manker?
Yeah, is it, is it, if, if the council, um, is complete with, um, discussion, I just want to take the moment to introduce our two new employees that's here today for the public.
Okay.
Oh, no, I have one more, Nika's going to present real quick and then we'll be finished.
Okay.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. That's, um, Treasurer, um, Shannon, the Treasurer said, my name is Nika Hart, I'm the accountant in the Treasurer's office. And I passed out, um, pamphlets for you guys to take a look at. Uh, this only consists of our rolling bank statement for the specific weeks that you see on this spreadsheet. Um, the top portion is your beginning balance of that, uh, bank statement for our master account, which has all of revenues that we receive from federal and state. And a different breakdown is what is coming in as far as the credit inflows. It breaks it down by state, federal grants, and all others. And then we have the debit sections of it that will show you how it's broken out into the payroll uh, for schools and for city debt services, economic development, and all others. So this is just a simple breakdown of what, um, Mr. Brunson discussed with you guys as far as how he expensed that information out. And this is how you can see how we receive the revenues in the Treasurer's office and where we allocate them. Now, they can move around depending on how the different departments may say, well, this money was received here, we need to reallocate it to a different fund or a different, um, period or a different week. So it can definitely change, but the fact that does not change are your beginning balances and your ending balances in your bank statement. So this is just a brief summary of what we have in our master account now. And Mr. Brunson explained to you how he expensed all that information out. Uh, this is the format that I will proceed going forward unless you guys want to see something different. Let me know, or let Shannon know. And we will set that up for you guys for our next meeting.
I have a question.
Councilor Powell?
Why in the city payroll, one week is nine hundred and sixty million, I mean, thousand, and then the next week is fifty thousand?
Payroll week.
Huh?
Payroll week. We ran payroll during that time.
Oh, pay, oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is broken in by week.
So payroll, what is payroll for when it's fifty thousand? Just include a few people?
It could be one-off checks.
Oh, okay. I think I understand. But every two weeks?
Not by month.
Huh?
Unless you want to see it a month, I can break it out exactly for you guys.
But I, I remember on something that Mr. Brunson presented, if our payroll is nine hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars every two weeks, that when, would that equal the yearly amount that you get? It seemed like it was more than just one point.
Yeah, if it's not hurt, if it's, that would be like two million a month, right? Your dollars every two weeks or, there's twenty-six weeks. Um, but it would, we're about at twenty million dollars. But there's, the variance comes and there's payroll, and then there's times you have to pay medical insurance and V R S. And those are paid monthly, so those don't always show up.
They were a second, they were a separate category.
Yeah, they're a separate category.
I'm talking just for wages and salaries.
Right.
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'll, those will add up over time and I don't, I mean, I just don't, I can't. That, the basic math works there, right? Just on a gross basis and I have to look at just how that works out.
And the school system has a one-point-two-million-dollar payroll every two weeks?
Gross, yes.
So I'd just like to take the opportunity today, um, since we have, um, participants in the audience and, and for City Council to, um, introduce our two new employees. After the meeting is over, if you have the opportunity to come up and shake hands and introduce yourself, I'm not going to require them to come to the mic, um, to say anything. But we have, uh, Miss Stacy Joy, who is our new CFO, she will take a stand. She's here tonight to kind of, um, as Russ, um, exit out from the organization. She just decided to come out tonight to try to get a feel for the Finance Committee and, and how, um, she can, um, continue the efforts that the Robert Bob group has left off. And then finally, thank you, Stacy. Finally, we have Deputy City Manager, Mr. James Gaston the third. He's here tonight, um, sitting in the Deputy's chair, it's been long overdue. And so he is also, uh, on staff and on boarded. We are now fully staffed in the city, uh, with our executive, um, employee staff. And so, uh, we're prepared the next couple of months to, uh, receive the handoff from the Robert Bob group. Um, so we will be better positioned to carry out, um, all the good, uh, policies and procedures that they have, um, put in place. So I just wanted to give the opportunity for Council to see the two new employees that are here. And after the meeting, if you could, um, please introduce yourself.
Well, I, can you also do that on Tuesday since that would be a regular meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And they'd be allowed to say something.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce your new Assistant Clerk?
This is Brian Hurdle. He's the, um, current Assistant City Clerk for us temporarily through, um, the Robert Half Group.
Okay.
Welcome aboard. All right. Sure, you want to get on this ship.
All right, if there's no other, uh, items of business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, ayes have it.